Somebody is gonna get hurt before we do it. I would hope that we'd be through with it today. But I still said somebody is gonna get hurt. I dropped it. I dropped my sound. I'm not mad at nobody. I say in the radio station, "I love everybody and you can't do nothing." Somebody's gonna get hurt. Jasper has been good to me. You know people that are publicizing and taping and be sure you say this Monday morning, Russell Stewart, be sure to say that, that I love Jasper. Jasper has been good to me. That's the truth. When you ride around in a brand new C R V pickup by the race of God, I ain't paid for it yet, but I'm watching. He's been good to me. I don't have nothing massive to say about Jasper. I just thought like the words in Alphasia and whoever put it there now, you ought to be ashamed. Suppose somebody said that about your child? Let's think. What if some... Did you drop? Somebody stole it all down and they can call the person Alphasia. That's what they said? And then they pass out the petition, "Get it out." And you don't know who signed it. They had some dead folks signing it. And then pass... Be shame on yourself. Stood up Jasper like this. Now let's get together, iron it out tonight and don't say what I said. You say what you want to say. Although I said, you know I was gonna say it anyway. Somebody is gonna get hurt. All right. All right. Come to church and Sunday school in the morning. Say amen, Russell.
I haven't heard anybody say anything about my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He is the only person in our lives that can make everything right in this city. You cannot be a hypocrite and try to do God's will. And the only way to try to get straightened out is to do the love of Jesus Christ. I shouldn't hurt him and he shouldn't hurt me. God told all the world that he gave his only God. Not for just the black, for the white too. And you can't go to heaven and look not to be there with us, because we're gonna be in one place. We gotta get together down here. And stop pushing and shoving and back fighting. Put God in your lives in the political field and all this mess is straightened out. You cannot straighten out by yourself. You can't do nothing right yourself. You got to have God. The son who said last time, "You cannot do anything without God." And I'm gonna take that right now. Open up your heart, take the master into your life and all of this will come to take. This night will pass. If all of us don't get reborn again, we gotta be a born again Christian. To stand up to this political world. And if you don't, Jasper will not move straight now. And I'm sorry, Stevie, but he will not. He is the only one that can straighten out this town. And all people see.
One of the primary purposes of this life is to help others. And if we can't help them, at least we shouldn't hurt them. Now with all that has taken place in the past year with Rodney and the city council, I don't know all the inside story, but what I've seen is pain inflicted on human beings. That's what has hurt me the worst. Not just because Terry is black and I know her, I've known her all my life. If she was anybody, what was such a harm? And the other city council members and to Rodney Pearson. Not just because he's black and he was elected and they think because he's black, he was elected. But what they have done to him and his family. This is a human being with a wife and children. The pain that they have inflicted, they have inflicted on him during his whole time. And I feel like that the whole thing was engineered. They got the blacks out, they put some whites in because they knew they were gonna get Rodney out. It was all planned. And they hurt these people. They are human beings. That's what pains me more than the word racism or anything. That they drug them through the mud, they talked about them, they did everything they could to make them look bad. That's what hurt me. And speaking to what Karen said, I just recently got on Facebook. I can't be on it for the longest. It's easy to get on Facebook because I don't have time. But having on Facebook is a good thing. It can be a good person. I found friends that I hadn't seen in years. I made friends with one of my relatives recently. On her site, it said, "I like KJS." I like KJS. I know Mike Loud. I knew him from high school. I could tell you a few things about Mike. I loved listening to Steve on the radio. I loved his voice. But when I saw on that site all the negative hateful stuff, I'm like, "Oh, no." Yes, my first thing was, "Okay, say something back." But now I'm like, "I'm not gonna stoop down. I'm not gonna stoop down with them." I wanna say, "Hey, y'all are a bunch of haters." Now I'm like, "No, I'm not gonna do that." I'm not gonna even address it. I was very disappointed. Because I thought Mike Loud would not allow that. I didn't think he would allow that. There was a piece, a symbol of a baby talking about Rodney Pearson. Making, mocking it. Do you know how painful that is for me to see that?
Yes, ma'am. When I was raised where that, I had to take that off.
Did you? Thank you. Thank you. And somebody from out of town, like you said, commented on the stuff going on in this town. And they said, "Please say that so." Well, a whole bunch of other people chimed in. I'm sure they were from Jasper. They just chimed in. See, that's what that started. It just got bigger and bigger. And they were attacking Rodney. He's already out. They're still attacking him. This is a human being. Whatever happened, the way he got hired, whatever happened. I knew Rodney back when he was highway patrol and he gave me a chicken. I told him, "He's fine." I knew him when I worked at the hospital. He did security, blue light. Nice, polite, good man. Okay, he applied for a job. He got the job. Okay, so he still loved him. So they set out to do something about it. Undercover, malevolence. There was nothing good about that. I just don't like the way it was done. Fine, if he was not the right man for the job, if what he done right. I just don't like the way it was done. That's what pains me. The way it just, like evil wicked people set out to do something about this life. "Oh, no, we're not having this." Yes, we need to live like God wants us to live. Tell him that. Hear that. But are they gonna do it?
Okay, wait a minute. Just one more. One more time before you speak the third time, all right? I'll let you done with me. And if somebody else wants to say something, then I'll come back to you, okay? Because we running down to the hour, okay?
My name is Jill. And my personnel, I believe, targeted Mr. Chris. It's a good job for him. The thing I had took him and looked at what he had done in his performance for past year. Did he do his job or did he not? My understanding is he did his job. Why did he take his job?
Jill, one thing that we wanna make sure, we've heard it before once, I want y'all to talk about some of those things, but you won't hear any response because of litigation going on with some of those issues.
That's right.
So we won't be responding to it. We understand your issues and concerns and a lot of us have those kind of concern. Some of those things are legal issues and we're not gonna be able to address those. This is very good and what y'all continue. Because part of the healing process you go through is expressing your feelings and your thoughts and making sure the community, making sure the mayor and all elected officials know this is what we feed. And Jasper has a lot of history and that history is what we're dealing with now. And what you're saying is true because you're saying it publicly.
That's right.
So we wanna make sure you know that this is what this is all about. Is making sure you have a right to say things that you feel strongly about and let our elected officials hear and let them know.
That's right.
Because they made statements opposite of what you're saying. And they're saying, "Well, they did it because they thought he was not qualified" or "that he was incompetent," things like this. So that's one of those issues, again, that we don't wanna address. We want you to understand what you're saying and we hear. But again, that's something that'll be dealt with later on.
I wanted to say, if that is a personnel issue, they fall under certain laws.
That's right.
And I talk about it in public. It's a personnel issue.
All right.
So we understand that.
I got you. You got me, ma'am. I just wanna say this. One thing, Paul. We got a good share. I think. Now you told him your opinion whatsoever. I told you that.
Where is he at?
He's right there. They made a wise move when they put Brother Harlem at a dump. May have, if he had done anything negative or different, you'd have some chaos around his shop. That was a wise move. Y'all agree. And in some cases, I think they have. But that was the wisest move that they ever wanted. Y'all be sure, I got opinions. Y'all be sure, before you leave, tell us the solution. It has already ate sixteen fifteen beans. Can you tell us the solution? How to digest it? Y'all come up with that, how we gonna digest it? I got the...
Did I say something?
Yes. There is world of bright and there is world wrong. There is world black and there is world white. Hispanic, another color's white. I was told by people not to come to this meeting today because it was gonna be a deal where I was gonna get over here and I was gonna be rude. I was gonna be rude. I ain't never been scared to walk into nothing. I ain't scared of nothing. Everybody knows me. Knows. And I'm an honest man. I don't lie. I got problems with others right now. I tell you. Anybody that knows in this room that knows me, grew up with me or whatever, may say that I have disagreed with you. But have I ever been disrespectful to you? A man in the end will be measured by the way he acts and the time it's told. Any man that's gonna come to you and say, "Sit down, my table, eat this whole plate of food." But when ain't for one visit and you and him been out the lifeboat for four weeks, you got how it's gonna go. When it's all said and done, my dad used to tell me, "You can be the biggest crook in town or you can be the best man in town." But in the end, you gonna be judged by how you treat people. Well, that's true. And I'll do fairness. I'd sit here and I'd listen to a lot tonight from our ministers. How I'm gonna have myself? Was it wrong to accuse Terry, his city councilman, of malfeasance? And have a withdrawal against them? Well then, why did you incite that against me? What did I do, ma'am? A recall was based on malfeasance and these other things against me. It was same face, same face. But they didn't tell Malfeasance, ma'am. Yes, it did. No, they didn't. I didn't read that. If you got elected, you didn't. But anyway, what I'm saying is, I don't know if you think that Jasper or Dennis recalled the deal against them or not. I didn't sign. I didn't care. Didn't have that to do with it. I didn't either. But it seems strange to me that some of the people who were very outspoken against this was a pastor. It's the same ones that then led to crusade to recall me. She was good for two, she was good for three. No, I don't go home. Let me say, people say that they've been hurt through all this. They need, they need something. I've been hurt. My poor elderly mother sits over there. She can barely, she can't read the paper. She can't read and see if people read to her and tell her what's in the paper. Here in the middle of this recall against me, I was a kid breaking in a church house over here. Trying to steal the petition.
Ain't nobody even do that.
That's the...
Nobody ever... The first thing was sent to the meeting, we made it plain. It's the mother folk. We made it plain because...
Right. I didn't say it.
Well, but people...
I said, "You're saying..." People said, "I made it plain."
Are these the leaders in the community? Are these the leaders in the community? You need to lead. You need to lead. Lead your people. And so we can call. Reverend, you understand that?
I understand.
You understand that, Reverend? The mayor is leader, okay? It's okay. But we're gonna be intelligent about it. This meeting will not solve every problem.
That's right.
I hope that it'll be a start, that you start to voice and think about what has happened. You at least have your opinion on the table. He heard you, you heard him. It's a start. I heard a minute, you say, "Why are we just having this meeting?" If you feel the need to have another one next month, next two months, call another meeting. And sit down. You need to talk until you talk it out. All right? And we also have to remember that some of the issues you have, you cannot solve here. We expect the leadership in this community to lead. And you need to lead them in the right direction. And so teaching people how to get along, teaching them when to speak, trying to have an audience, to speak to each other intelligently is part of the healing process. Yelling across the room will not solve anything. Talking about each other will not solve anything. Talking to each other will solve some problems. And so today, you have not had your say. The time is just about winding up. The atmosphere is getting a little heated. And so we need to calm it back down. And so I'd like to say with that in mind. This bird, did you see it? Okay, with that in mind, I'd like to say this bird will be our last speaker. And then after that, I want, after that, I would like to have one of the ministers in the room who's not angry. Every Ray, you can't do it.
I can't do it.
No, Mary, you can't do it. We have another minister in the room. You may come up and you may pray us out of here, okay? All right.
Everybody here know who I am, Michelle. I'm Jane Bird. Right now, my heart is pretty heavy. All the comments, all the racism, all the talk about my brother Jane Bird Jr. No, ma'am, it's not one of them. This will be a live every day of our lives. If we can gain anything right here. We gotta stop it. If you got a problem, come talk to me a lot. Tell me. Y'all, it's just so much hate. We said, "Don't raise them as this," right? And doing this. We been sweeping them for a long time, y'all, that racism don't exist in Jasper. And you know what? If you not choose it yourself, you can't get to the nobody. Yes, Bobby said, "I said, 'Razism exists in Jasper cases.'" If you say it now, you ain't denying. That's up to you. But I want you to let y'all know that I know who God is. And God is a forgiving God. He looks beyond all my faults, y'all. He saw my needs. So I left my mind that I'm saying nobody in my fault for crying. Mr. Mike, I tell you what I mean. I cry about you. I love you. I have a right to disagree with you, but don't mean I hate you.
No.
I don't really, I mean, don't mean I hate you. And the sad part, my, when someone speaks or they hate me. No, that's not true. Everybody was right there on the pain. And I don't know everything, but when nobody do something with them. As long as I'm alive, Mr. Jane Bird Jr.'s name will be still with me. And you know what really hurt me today? When the lady came to my house. She said, "They were gonna spread that you and my brother Adam respect." Because people both know this, they think when I mention this. That greed, my Lord. You know when I say? I said, "Mr. Jane Bird sings with you alive." They didn't wanna hear, but it's happened here in Jasper. What do you mean you don't wanna hear it, y'all? Y'all talking about Jane Bird. How you make his family see? How you make we close our eyes and like this on the teeth of you? How y'all pray my brother here? Don't you know that hurt? He got it.
That's right.
It greets me, y'all. Doesn't seem like we have went nowhere. We still stuck in this. And you know what, y'all? I refuse to be stuck. I refuse to be stuck. See, anybody here with me, I refuse to get in this stuff. That's why I know if you hate, you hate love, and we got to walk. Get it right. Because I have a right to speak. Right? You have a right to speak. Everybody have a right to speak. We have a right to freedom to speak, but what happened to us? We can't be young freedom? White folks, black folks messed everybody, lied in the war, trying to help one another. When my brother died, people come to my house and my prayer didn't like nothing. Nothing. And some said, "If y'all ever need me, call me." But why we can't call y'all today? What's wrong? What's wrong, ma'am? What's wrong, y'all? What's wrong? Do y'all hate just that? What it became? Take one another heads in the war? As I get ready to post, y'all? Wonder why I'm chilling? My granddaughter saying, "Well, oh." You got a daughter who pay my little white friend? Yeah, that hurts. These are children we talking about. Do I say, "No, you can't do it"? Do I say, "Don't do it"? They're free. I can't even speak. They're free because of what's going on with us. If wrong people came, we slubbing in the name of Jesus. What hope do we have, y'all? What hope do we have, hey? What can we do? My heart is so grieving now, y'all. I can't, I'm taking, I sit, I said, "What gonna talk? I what gonna say?" I want y'all to know that Jane Bird sings. He still alive, y'all. He still here, y'all. He has all the heart now, but he can hear y'all. And he can really... Don't you know when y'all swear on his son's name and say, "We not gonna miss it." People said, "Thank you." I'm not talking about Jane Bird. You don't know. We part of this. What have we done? I don't celebrate, girl. I'm just saying, "Don't bother with me." And somebody right next to me, "We thank you. I miss you." That's my daughter. That hurts, y'all. What have we done? What have we done? So everybody is saying, "Look, repeat yourselves. What have we done? What have we done? I don't give a damn. You just trained my brother down like, "Yeah, did he like to get killed?" Did he ask? Y'all just keep praying. Y'all, y'all just don't know how it makes us feel. Y'all never been there, have nobody that's rubbing their head all over their body. Lord have mercy. Y'all sit and sit and sit.
Reverend, Reverend, the Lord is coming. I wanna thank for the mayor, Marilla. I appreciate you coming. I really appreciate you coming. I appreciate those in the white community who've come and has come today to this town. We knew that it was gonna be difficult because we have a difficult time ahead as we go forward. And I think if we can make something easier for all of us because we live here. And it's good for us to hear and to see the emotions, the feeling that we felt and saw today. Either words that were spoken, tears that were shed, the misunderstandings we have with each other, I think.
Good, good.
How, by looking at each other, we can see, "Well, you mean he didn't say that if you didn't do that?" We find out that people didn't do what we thought they did or said we thought they did. And that understanding is so important to healing our community and healing our city. Thinking and talking like this, letting it out. Mike, it's hard to admit it's a bad thing we misunderstood and we try all you know how.
That's right.
It's a hard thing for us to be one place, thinking one thing, and then you're meaning another thing. But if we talk, if we hear, communicate with each other and get a good understanding, nothing is worth more than that. In your, on the sixth page of this book, Made Yellow, it says, "Resolution of Respect." Everybody, if anybody got one of these, I hope you do. If you don't have one, raise your hand and someone with a wringing one. Right here, there's a box there, Reverend Lewis, here mentally with some cable. There should be a pack of those. Just raise your hands. You got enough. I want y'all to look at those. Those are very important. Page six. I wanna thank, would you give Dr. Emily Allen a hand? I will certainly tell New State Representative Jane White that he is going to get a dinner or lunch. He's not here yet. He won't be here until January. New State Representative. Everybody, look at this page. It says, "Resolution of Respect." Everybody got that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Everybody, would you just join me in reading this? You don't have to sign the check, but I want you to join me in reading this together with me, everybody. It says, "Resolution of Respect. I pledge from this day forth, do my best, unbacked record, and stop those with father pain or ignorance, with hurt anyone of our ancestors or brothers. I will try all the time to be aware of my own biases and seek to gain understanding of those who are perceived as being different from myself. I will speak out against all forms of prejudice and discrimination. I will reach out to support those who are hardworking or vain. I will think about specific ways my community members and promote respect for people that create prejudice or racism. I permanently believe that one person can make a difference and that no person can be innocent by their own when it comes to opposing hate. I recognize that respecting individual dignity and achieving equality is an integral part of responsibility to all people. By signing this pledge, I commit myself to creating a respectful community." How many y'all agree with what you're giving, Reverend? How many y'all believe you can have it? You mean we can get it laid, you need to sign it before we leave today? Are y'all sure you pledge to that? Okay, let me see your hand if you say you gonna pledge to it. All right, okay. Okay, now, everybody that didn't raise your hand, you're gonna get a free catfish. I'm just kidding. I get the catfish, not free. But anyway, I want everybody today to join me. If you don't have a pen, real science, because I wanna make this day a day of history for our community. And I want people outside to know that we came together, we talked, we raised our voices a little bit, we shouted, we cried. And I want you to know that we came out of something positive in our community. That's for us a little bit. Next week, I want y'all to look at this right here with the mayor's hand. I want to see it right there to him while he's signing this. Reza, would you come sign, come here? Sign this. He is the mayor. Reverend Lewis, did you sign it?
Yeah.
All right. Stand right by my back.
You know, I didn't, I didn't sign the resolutions and get rid of. Come back. You want to take ours. Good niggas. You want to take ours after such a awful job. Let's give a hand, y'all.
All right, yeah.
And he thinks he's the only one saying that.
All right, everybody? Thank y'all so much. And now, we're in the north where the heat comes. It's all big stay. Everybody. All right. Everybody?
Yes, we can.
All right, the prayer, everybody, the prayer.
No.
He trying to fall, we come before they all might have gone. Father, we don't have the answers, but you have all the answers. Every problem that we face. Father, Dr. King once said, "Let no man "blow you to the level of pain." Father, there's, they ain't hated it about our heart. These gods, right now, in the name of Jesus, we ask you to remove it. Father, there's any misunderstanding in our hearts. In the name of Jesus, please remove it. Father, we ask you, the words of our old ancestors, give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breath to breath. Father, we know that there are many lines that's between us right now. So, Father, there was a line between God and man one day. And you send your son, Jesus, to bridge that gap between God and man. Father, we ask that you bridge that gap and bind us together in love and unity as only you can do. And, Father, the scripture says, "By this all men will know that we are your blessing." If we have love for one another. Father, forgive us, Father, if we have unforgiveness in our hearts. You will not hear our prayers. So take it out, Father. Need a thing that's not pleasing unto thee, remove it right now in order that we may be. Father, if there's any wrongdoing, we know that one day it won't be settled in a federal court. But there's a higher court here. Presise that everything will be all right. But until then, teach us how to work together. Teach us how to walk together. Teach us how to love together in the name of Jesus. Father, those that are hurting, the birds found. Father, cover them. We heard of another city that one day won't be no more crying. And there's the scriptures that you will wipe away all of our pain. Until then, Father, keep them in harmony. Keep them in peace. And above all, keep them in love. And then, Father, when all is said and done, the time we leave this world, let the work we done on this side speak for us on the other side in the name of Jesus. Amen.